And now I can do the introductions. So Ms. Tammy Kenny has been an advocate for HIV for a number of years. We know that Tammy's heart and passion and dedication is to rule women across the South. She has the Rule Women's Network. And in her spare time, Tammy is the fashion diva for Georgia. You cannot miss her unique hairstyles and glasses and jewelry and attire. She keeps us up to date in fashion, but don't let that fool you. She truly is knowledgeable and an expert when it comes to addressing HIV care and treatment for Black women in rural communities. We also have with us Ms. Kayla Quimbley. As some of you have already heard, Kayla has an amazing gift of poetry. Poetry that speaks to the heart, but also poetry that speaks to action in a way of arousing a crowd to know that HIV is not something that we sit on the sidelines and don't take action for our community. That HIV is something that impacts us all. And so there's a place and work for us all to do. And using her artistry to be able to convey such a social justice message is absolutely phenomenal. I am very blessed to serve with Kayla on a Gilead project that talks about women champions in our HIV work. I believe that Kayla may be the youngest change agent listed in this project. And so it really does speak to what great leadership that we have now and that will continue in our future as we continue to address HIV in Black communities. Last, but definitely not least, is as you see on the screen, her government named Deirdre Johnson. But the world, the globe, the planet knows her as Deirdre Speaks. And Deirdre has worked in HIV for over 20 years, but is most passionate about her activism on eradicating stigma. And she will share with you as she presents on just some historic movement and work that she has done through the years. Deirdre is the co-founder of Ending Criminalization of HIV and Overincarceration in Virginia, known as Echo Virginia. This is a coalition that is a vast network of multiracial and gender inclusive Virginians led by people living with HIV and their allies, fighting for freedom from stigma and injustice for all. Now, this is not her whole resume, but there are a few things that I do want to highlight just to let you know who is in our space on today. Deirdre has served as the state lead for the Positive Women's Network USA and is a graduate of the 2019 Policy Fellowship, the 2022 Zero Project Justice Initiative Fellow, and alum of Sister Love Incorporated 2020 Leading Women's Society, a former U = U+ ambassador. And she has been featured as the top 125 and 10 amazing people living with HIV by Plus Magazine. And you can also find Deirdre hosting her own podcast, a support group called Pillow Talk, where people living with HIV convene. And collectively, this body averages over 300 years of experience. So when I tell you that you are in for a treat with these three amazing women, sit back, but don't sit too far back because they're gonna want you to engage with them by using your chat feature, sharing comments, let them know that you hear them and that you are with them as we partake in this amazing discussion. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tammy and Kayla to guide our discussion on today.
Okay, thank you all for being here. And I want to thank you McKinley Beach, as I call you, for having me and inviting me for this fruitful conversation. First of all, I do want to acknowledge, I choose to use the phrase, "This is a healthy space" where we're going to have healthy conversations around HIV criminalization. And as I learned, the ins and outs, the new laws, the old laws, this is very dear to me from my own experiences. We are not here to traumatize anybody with their own experiences. We are here to bring information to transform the minds and educate people what HIV criminalization is all about and how people living with HIV can be protected up under the new Georgia law.
Well, I want to say thank you too, Alicia, for having me in this space. Me personally, when it comes down to HIV criminalization laws, I always say that HIV is not a me or a you issue, it's a we issue. So we owe it to ourselves to speak up and speak out and hold those, not just those living with HIV accountable, but also those living without. And so we have to have these conversations to make change, but also talk about the change that has been had and what else we can do to maybe fine tune those things, if any. So thank you all for being in this space with us today, and we're gonna have some fun.
So here are some of the facts.
You're a volume, you're not, we can't hear you.
Okay. Here are the facts. We're looking at what the law says, and I don't want to leave out anything. So I'm going to read exactly what it says, if that is okay with everybody, because I would like for everybody to get the full message. Thank you, McKinley. What the law says, "A person with HIV must know of their status, fail to disclose their status, intentionally seek to transmit HIV, and then engage in sexual behavior that poses a significant risk of transmission." Significant risks of transmission must be based on current scientifically evidenced methods of transmission. The act is considered a felony and punishable up to five years in prison.
So in terms of Georgia law, when it comes down to bodily fluids, there are no specific bodily fluids included in the current law. However, we know that the CDC says that blood, semen, and vaginal secretion, as well as breast milk are modes of transmission. In Georgia, people living with HIV still can be prosecuted and charged with aggravated assault, which is a felony, with up to 20 years of imprisonment. And there are also people living with HIV with any other STI may still be quarantined or isolated by Georgia's Department of Public Health if the department believes doing so will protect public health.
So, but the good news, the good news. Georgia made changes to their HIV criminalization laws in 2022 to remove the following. People with HIV will no longer be prosecuted, thank you, will no longer be prosecuted for asking another person or submit to an act of sodomy without first disclosing their status. People with HIV will no longer be prosecuted for donating blood, blood products, bodily fluids, or organs without first disclosing their status. People with HIV will no longer be prosecuted, I said that, excuse me. No felony punishment for people with HIV or people with hepatitis who place their blood, semen, vaginal secretions, saliva, urine, or feces upon an officer or correctional officer. Felony-level punishment retained. However, a person convicted of any of the law above now faces up to five years imprisonment instead of 10 years imprisonment. So that means that we have came a very, very long way. We still have work to do on these laws here in the state of Georgia and other states to make the laws reflect on science connected with HIV.
And in regards to prevention of HIV, there is PrEP available as well as PEP. PrEP stands for preexposure, sorry, prophylaxis, which is a medicine that prevents anyone that is not living with HIV from contracting HIV, as well as PEP, which has to be taken within 72 hours of potential exposure. And you can look into your local emergency room or providers in the area to see where PrEP, PEP is offered, as well as PrEP.
So sex is a beautiful thing, pleasure is a beautiful thing. So if you choose to participate in consensual sexual activities, once again, I must say it's a beautiful thing, right? All parties have given their voluntary consent to participate in sexual act. You are also choosing to participate in the responsibility. Let me say that again. You are also choosing to participate in the responsibility of maintaining your own sexual health and shared accountability of all the safety of all parties involved. And I do want to say, this is not a responsibility of one person. This is a responsibility of two people, or however a person chooses to have consensual sex. So we're going to move to Ms. Deirdre Johnson before we have our fruitful, healthy conversation about HIV criminalization. We would love to know your thoughts. And once again, we are not here to traumatize anybody, you know, with their lived experiences.
So hello, 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 everyone. Let me fix that voice. First and foremost, Tammy and Kayla, thank you, thank you, thank you for going over what is going on in Georgia. But more importantly, I'm just excited to share this space with you two beautiful queens in this just moment. I've heard so much about, of course, Kayla and last night, and Tammy is like a mother in the movement. And of course, Alicia, Dr. Beach, we thank you for getting us all together in this moment. We are still celebrating you and how you are showing up in this movement and how you have showed up. And this is another way that you always make sure that you're sharing everything through all of your projects. And of course, hence the name, Project Share. So Zero Project is absolutely proud to be a part of this conversation. More so just to share, we are still celebrating. As of yesterday, we are proud to announce that HIV is Not a Crime Awareness Day is going global. And so we have a whole bunch of things, yes, that is a lot to celebrate because we know all across the world now, people are being criminalized for their HIV status and not just in the United States. And we're taking this not to the next level, but we're gonna be working together to make sure that people know that HIV is not a crime. We also know that the only diseases that are ever criminalized are HIV or sexually transmitted infections. And we want to work to where there are no laws that will be continuing to do that. So we're only here as a representation to let you know that yesterday, as of February 28th, 2024, HIV is Not a Crime Awareness Day has gone global. And we want to thank Zero Project, one of our founder, co-executive directors, Kamaria and Laffrey, as well as Tammy Hott and Elizabeth Taylor AIDS Foundation for that. Although I have a billion other accolades, I'm very proud to actually be serving as Zero Project's National Programs and Strategic Planning Manager. And we are proud of the work that all of our AMP grantees are doing and especially celebrating HIV is Not a Crime Awareness Day in 2024 as it goes global. So I am not gonna go too much further because I really want to hear about more of this conversation about how folks in Georgia are feeling about these HIV criminalization laws, the awareness, and what we're doing next to make sure that not too many other people in this world and not any anymore are criminalized because of their HIV status. So thank you, and I can't wait for this productive conversation.
Thank you, thank you, Deirdre. So we're going to jump into the questions to get the conversation started. I'm not sure where everybody is from. Could you drop, could everybody drop what state they're from into the chat? What we want to get is, we want to get a conversation started about what you know about HIV criminalization and maybe what that looks like, what that looks like in everybody's state? Because we know that HIV criminalization varies from state to state. So we have Atlanta, Georgia in the chat. We have South Carolina in the chat. Thank you all for participating, we appreciate it. So I guess I will start until we get some more people in the chat. So we express what Georgia laws look like and what has changed since 2022, which is a beautiful thing. Me personally, I know right now there is a case that Alicia was talking about. I forget the man's name, but that is happening right now in Georgia. And there being specific words that I think is if you have the intent in talking about what does intent mean when talking about HIV criminalization? And if that proves to be a reason to prosecute a person or not. And so I was talking to Alicia before we had this conversation because I was saying that I don't think anybody asks for HIV, right? We don't wake up one day and say, hey, I want to have HIV today, right? And so it becomes a thing, though, it's like, I didn't ask for HIV, but I also want people to be aware of what it is and how to protect themselves. And I also want to hold people accountable, right? But does that equate to criminalizing somebody for something that none of us actually asked for? Nobody goes out to ask for that. So I know a little bit about the criminalization as we've all sat here and soaked up today with the facts of what the law looks like now. But I've just still had a conflict of interest within myself of how I feel about HIV criminalization because some people do have the intention to make other people have other people to experience the same thing that they're experiencing, not from a place of love, but from a place of they're not happy about the state of what they're dealing with and experiencing. So I'm gonna let somebody else take the floor. If you want to take the floor, Tammy, but I just kind of wanted to spearhead and start it off.
So I think I will share briefly. In the early 90s, in my addiction, and we all do know, if you're in active addiction, you do not make healthy choices, whether it's financially, sexually, you do not make healthy choices. And me not knowing how to have a healthy conversation, a condom conversation, me knowing I'm a woman living with advanced HIV, I am a long-term survivor, 36 years. I had unprotected sex. In that conversation, you know, even though I continue to say, "We gotta use a condom, we gotta use a condom, we gotta use a condom," but I'm just going to be very transparent because, you know, this is a learning session and also an educational session. And by me sharing my experience in hopes no one else will be caught up in that experience, going on to say, "I had unprotected sex," not one time, not two times, not three times, but five or six times with the same guy in our active addiction. And one day I was on my way to the doctor in Atlanta. He was on the bus, and everybody in Atlanta know this particular area. When you get off that bus right there, you are going across the street. And he was like, he was looking at me, I was looking at him. You know, my heart was jumping, and I was like, now, shall I just get off the bus and walk down the street? You know, because now I'm afraid. He doubled back. I got off the bus and I went straight on across the street because I didn't want to miss my doctor's appointment. He got off the bus and doubled back looking for me. And all hell broke loose. You know, I was all kind of names, he was gonna call the law, he was gonna get the TV stick. He was gonna do all this, and I was standing there, you know, literally shaking. And the support of the women there, those who did not have a diagnosis, those who had a diagnosis, was like, you know, we're standing with you, whatever happens. But that was a very scary time for me because I actually thought that I was going to go to jail, then going, and then right onto prison for having unprotected sex. And me knowing I had a diagnosis. And so this law, this HIV criminalization is very dear to me because I could have been one of the ones that the Zero Project could be fighting for to be released or to be a part of the new law that has changed in 2022. And I just really wanted to open the floor and share that, that experience with you all, hoping that somebody may want, if they, you don't have to say it's your experience, or you may just want to feel free to just share about somebody you know without calling a name or how HIV criminalization impacts you and why you may and may not advocate for the change.
Well, Tammy, as someone is becoming, as you said, a healthy space, recognizing, getting, asking their question, you can still place a question or comment in the chat, or you can raise your hand, and we're small enough that you can share your comments verbally. So as that person is preparing, you know, one thing that comes to mind for me is you were telling this story about yourself. Again, kind of speaks to why we have created this toolkit, and that is to have the conversations, right? Like, I can't imagine, and I've heard you share this story before, but I can't imagine the trauma that that is to, in an instant, gotta make a decision. Do I prioritize my healthcare? Or do I prioritize trying to maintain the privacy of my HIV status? And then choosing yourself over your privacy. Now it becomes public and the ramifications that can come from that. And for me, as someone, and I normally don't share this, although I have shared this more frequently as we've been working with Project Share, I normally don't share my HIV status. And the reason for that is because that in itself can be stigmatizing. You know, as a woman not living with HIV, it's like, oh, okay. You know, like, her story or her narrative is different. We all have an HIV status. It's not all the same, but we all have a status. And for me, as a part of this work, is to show up as an ally to say that I fully believe in all situations, it is a responsibility of everybody who is engaging in sex, right? To protect their sexual health. Whether my partner just closes or not, I have to prioritize Alicia. All of this, all this body is my responsibility. And so whether I know what's happening on the other side or not, there are some choices and decisions that I gotta make for me to maintain my current HIV status. And that's just, you know, how I frame it. But I saw a hand, is it Ms. Collier, Wanda Collier?
Yeah, hey, McKinley, this thing, my goddess.
Yes, hi, young lady, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Awesome.
So I wanted to piggyback on my sister Tammy's conversation or talking about HIV criminalization. You know, a lot of times I heard, I forgot your name, it started with a K. Kayla, that's how you say your name? Okay. And I heard when you said, you know, we do have some people that are intentional and to, intentional that would want to, you know, put that on someone. But there are also trauma behind that, you know, when it comes to that mind frame. Because I remember when I first was diagnosed, I was angry. And I was angry at a lot of me. I was also in addiction and had done prison time and felt a lot of the stigma from the jail. You know, so I don't, I'm grateful that I didn't get locked up and that God saw fit to heal my mind from the way that I was thinking. But there's definitely a lot of trauma behind that frame of mind. I love what McKinsey said about, I say this all the time in my talk. I ask people, "How many you think that I'm supposed to tell you about my HIV status?" And everybody hand go up. But at the end of the day, I'm not responsible for anybody's life. And at that time, I didn't have morals, you know, because of the lifestyle I was living. I had to get my drugs, I had to get my money. So I didn't have morals back then. So I'm not responsible for your life. You have to, you have to be accountable for your own life and ask questions and do the things that need to be done when it comes to your own sexual health. But I've been that person, I guess I was gonna say. And I just realized there's a lot of trauma behind having that mindset.
Well, I first want to say thank you for coming on and thank you for sharing. And I think that's the importance of having these conversations because when you're coming from your lens, it's kind of harder. It's kind of harder, it's harder for you to see where other people are coming from without having insight or knowing more. So I thank you for sharing uh first and foremost. I was telling Lisha, like I have said already on here. I, as a person living with HIV, I still struggle with. Because like you, you said during that time, you feel like you didn't have morals. And so I think it becomes more of a morality thing, right? And morality looks different for everybody. During that time, you didn't feel like you're responsible for the life of somebody else. And in my reality, it would eat me up, I would not be able to sleep like that, right? Um, and we're not perfect beings at all, I'm not saying alone this journey, I have not made mistakes. Um, but I've learned from those mistakes and that that's essentially what everybody is saying when they're telling their story. We're all on on a journey, um, and I do think people should be accountable for their own sexual health. I think we owe it to ourselves and others, though, and that's just my personal opinion. And two things can exist at the same time, right? So you feeling how you feel and me feeling how I feel can both exist at the same time and that's the beauty in it. But I want to thank you for sharing that with us. The um next, the next question on here is um. Uh, do we want to go into the next question?
I do want to say, I love how you framed that two things can be happening at the same time. Um, because that's what happens with the laws that we have. Um, not just in Georgia, but across the country and really across the world. Is that at times, the laws may not line up with the science. And or what our lived real experiences are in real time. And so having these, like, this is again, you know, why Cero supports these type of activities. Because now we're able to have, and I love, love, love the way that just so took place. How we can do that and it's not a yucky my yum, you are better than I. This is two individuals having two different lived experiences, but the same experience all at the same time. And the laws are the same. We know that like stigma is one of the driving forces. And even in the laws, in the language that is in the laws, we have words like infectious or infected. And we know that language matters. Tammy said something earlier that I think we all, you know, can definitely agree with with advanced HIV. And at times we're hearing other things. And then when we have our state, our government, the governing bodies of our bodies, unfortunately, there are such things. Saying these negative things about our bodies when that may not necessarily be so. And even in the sense of intent, um, I don't know about many of you. I would take my quick Cero hat off, but when I am engaging in beautiful consensual pleasure, however that pleasure may show up. My intent is not, you know, HIV and to make sure that it is transmitted. But then at the same time, I don't know, yeah, again, not my intention. My intention is for some other things to happen um with squirrels and nuts. And hopefully those things will will take place. But we know these laws don't, and this is why um it's important for us to continue to have these type of conversations. So, um, yeah, so I just wanted to point out, language does matter. This language does not necessarily um align with the laws and what are there. I will say Georgia um was right after what Virginia did with our laws and expanding. And we know that we didn't even get it right and perfect. But we know that now by having these conversations, what people are looking for, we're all having these rich dialogues. So two narratives can go at the same time. And we can make sure to make sure that we have a healthy space for everybody to be there. And I'll stop there, um.
And I think Kayla, before you go on to the next question. I really do want to just stress the significance of. The changes in Georgia's law. Um, because before December twenty twenty-two, which is not that long, what, a year, fourteen months ago? Um, so fourteen months prior. It was easy to remember Georgia's HIV criminalization laws. Because everything was a felony and everything was up to ten years in prison. And that everything was even someone who is diagnosed with HIV. Um, spitting on a first responder, right? So a police officer or correctional officer. That that person could be charged for up to ten years in in prison. And we know saliva is not a fluid that transmit HIV. And so you think about that, you know, that even though. Well, we didn't get the win to change from felonies to misdemeanors. Let's accept first the micro wins of of the felony charges being reduced from ten years to five years. The fact that um there is such strong language now that says intent. Versus just being diagnosed with HIV, like there's, there has to be evidence to show that there was intent to transmit. Um, no longer is a person living with HIV um charged for. Um, not disclosing their status to needle sharing partners. Um, that's, that's also a, a, a big win. And the example that I just gave about spitting or urinating on um first responders. That's no longer a charge. And so that came with advocacy. Uh, some of the people who are in this space may have been some of the ones that were working with um. The um Georgia HIV Justice Coalition to get some of these laws changed. Uh, but I do think that it's important for those of us who do any work or engage with. People through HIV care, treatment and prevention understand those laws. Because we have to make sure, especially people who are newly diagnosed. That uh they know that the state that they live in requires disclosure to their sexual partners. And and some folks are saying that they didn't know that, you know. And so it means that there's got to be more education within our own workforce. That we are informing people that because of your um status now as someone living with HIV. You must disclose.
One other piece that um you brought, you broke, brought up intent. Um, under Georgia's laws, they are um, so general criminal laws, they're also will add, you can to add on. So, um, Lisha, because this is so fictitious, um, you and I know that this will never happen. But me and you are together and um I am upset with you because you have on those beautiful black glasses. And we get to um, get to to throw in some, some hands fighting. And if I'm a person of HIV experience and whether there was blood or not, semen, saliva, all of those body fluids. There is that possibility that Lisha will say, hey, not only did, you know, she assaulted me. But then because of my HIV status, then in Georgia, then it could also be an additional piece caught, tacked on. Because I am a person of HIV status. And so we do have run that that risk of that happening and folks may not knowing of that. But then that's also going back to something that Tammy brought up today. About sharing your status and putting that disclosure out because for safety reasons, it might not be safe to share those things. Um, whether you're in whatever relationship or friendship, whether it is sex work. Um, however, that may show up for anybody. Then there's a safety issue that is also involved for that person that is of lived experience. I see that Georgia has um already put in, and this is something that Virginia is actually working on right now in our senate. Um, there is a bill that's out there for where, um, if you do spit on an officer. Lisha already brought that up, there's no way that HIV will be disseminated in or transmitted in that way. Um, for this to happen, so um I just want to just, you know, even have some discussion on that. That how fair can that be if, you know, there was no. That when Lisha and I got into it, there was no, you know, it was just a, a simple slap. There was nothing more, nothing less, there was no blood, no anything. And there's that possibility that I could be charged that extra time. So I just wanted to, you know, even throw that out there as a conversation starter possibly for itself.
Yeah, I think what intent, um, something that. You, in in that situation that you gave, right? When we talk about intent and when you get into the court, it's always my word against your word, right? And that's what a conflict, the interest still comes in it, right? With criminalization period, because if we get into the courtroom. And which I've experienced having somebody who was bitter after a breakup, right? And was like, oh, you gave me this and they didn't even have HIV. But because that was something that they knew, one that I felt very strongly about, that was something that. I just, they, they understood my viewpoint on that particular thing. And they, they threw it up, but also it's like, sir, you're threatening my livelihood right now, like you, you're playing with my life and doing that. And my, my intention, I've always disclosed, I disclosed to my partner, so it was, you were aware. And so when we talk about intent, it's just still like, when I think about the word in the court, I'm just like, that's still not good enough to me, right? Like, what other language can we use? Because intent, intent is super suggestive and subjective. Um, so I was thinking about that, but um something that I do want to throw out, um, rest in peace to Tiffany Moreiro. But when she was here, she um brought out a, a contract, she encouraged.
And Kayla froze at a, a, an amazing story.
Yes, yes, and I think I know where she um, she was going, Tiffany. Ooh, if you didn't know Tiffany, you knew Tiffany, Tiffany was um from Florida. But she was uh all over the place, sharing her good news and how she shows up in her beautiful light and on some levels. Oh, if you know, you know, she there, she's here, even in this moment. Um, I know that she had bought out a contract at some point where she would have people to sign and say, hey. You are aware of my HIV status as, you know, we move forward. And I, I think that may have been the story that, that Kayla may be going, going towards. And, you know, even there, there, there could be in some eyes, some folks may say that that's a double-edged sword. Because then you go in, the whole goal of these laws is for, for those of us that may be accused. Is we want to make it as hard as possible for the prosecutor to prosecute us. And so, and sometimes if we put with even having the knowledge and not having the knowledge, depending on what state you're in. With disclosure and those kind of things, it just, it becomes tricky, sometimes having too much proof or having not enough proof. But more importantly, the biggest pieces that we really want to try are darned is to keep people's names out of the media. Because that can um create a um more stigma and harsh. Because also within these laws, if you are prosecuted, then depending on what those, if it's a felony. We can go into income and how that impacts your income and your jobs, your housing situations. Um, you know, in certain places you can't move into if you have a felony. Um, and then if there's other things attached on to it, so there's impacts beyond the courtroom. Um, and also beyond the fear of being prosecuted, prosecuted. Because that fear of being prosecuted can also be something of, of conversation as well. I hope we get Kayla back.
I do too, because um she was going to go into detail about the contract, yes. So, um, I don't have the questions in front of me, McKinley Beach, but I would like to ask. For the people who have joined us for this healthy conversation, even though a lot of you all, or it's a few of you all. That do not live in Georgia. But for those of you all who do, what would you like to see added to the new law? That can protect people living with HIV? What changes would you all like to see? You, you all can put it in the chat, or you can raise your hand, or, or either you can just unmute. Because as you know, HIV affects not only people living with HIV, but everybody. This is a community concern. I hear, see, Wanda came off mute.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, being, having been that person. Um, if the state, instead of locking me up, would have gave me more counseling, more, more, um. More dealing with the trauma behind the mindset that I have. That it would have gotten better faster. Um, in the sentence that they, that they had put me in. Because even going to jail and prison, um, they knew the mindset that I had. Um, because I was very, um, very voiceful about, I would give two flimes, you know, at that time. And it was never addressed, even when I talked to my counselor, it was never really addressed. Um, being in that, that setting.
So if I hear you correct it, if you don't mind, if I readdress what you're saying, um, stigma goddess. Is that even though your experiences after the fact, you never had any. Let me see if I can put things in order, you never had any education behind HIV criminalization. Um, no trauma informed care to talk about your experiences. Um. Where you could have made some mental assessment of you personally? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's exactly what you're hearing me say.
Okay, thank you for sharing, Wanda.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, my, my.
Go ahead, because we wanted you back so you could finish the story.
No, and I was apologizing because I was, I was, I was moving and everybody else's face was frozen. So I'm like, what's going on? But my computer is connected to my hotspot and my phone died, so it just completely messed me up. But, um, yeah, I know we are on crunch for time, time is about to be out. So I'll finish it real quick, but I was just saying that in her doing the work that she did while she was here. I used that because I had a partner who was very just, he was just always like on eggshells about, he knew my status. But it was a conflict of interest, I'm like, when we, when we go our separate ways, if, because what if you go out into the world and do what you do? And then you try to come back and say that I gave you this and that you didn't know. I mean, you, I don't know, whatever, but I had him to sign, I, I wrote it up, had him to sign it. And, um, I, I use it as needed now, so I don't do it to everybody. But if I feel like, mm, I don't know if I can really trust you, I'mma just go ahead and get you to do that. But, um, so I guess I, I would just say I employ people to do the things that make them feel comfortable. When I'm meeting with clients and they're newly diagnosed, I tell them, you don't have to do this. But if that's something you're concerned about when disclosing and you're gonna have a new partner, then, you know, I encourage them. I give them tools to use in navigating this journey. So, um, I, that was just the end of that, but um I will let Tammy or Lisha take it over from here because we're on crunch time.
I think I'm just going to say just a few words and then McKinley Beach will close us out. But for me and the individuals, the young people, even seasoned people. You know, make informed decisions when it comes to consensual sexual relationship. Or however you choose to have your own personal pleasure. Be sure that you know that this is what you want to do for you, protect you. Even if, let me just say for me, it took me a long time. I don't use the word disclosure because that brings, that traumatized me and bring me back to the criminal activity days. When you're sitting with the prosecutor and they say, well, Ms. Tammy just disclosed. when you're sitting with the prosecutor and they say, well, Ms. Tammy just disclosed this, that, and another. So I choose to use the word, I'm sharing my status with you, right? Because at that time, if you don't want a piece of the pie, it is okay. Because I am confident enough and educated by my wonderful, beautiful sisters that's on this call, that I will be okay after the fact. But be mindful, you do not have to share unless you feel like it is necessary for you. And make sure it's in a safe space and you are safe.
So, wow, I, I told you that this would be a very rich conversation. I, I want to thank Kayla and Tammy and Deidra for just guiding us through this dialogue. Sister Kenny, clearly we are not gonna let you go without, not, not, not a piece of the pie. Because, you know, that, that person ain't worthy of the whole pie. I give you a slice of this good pie I got. But that's, that, that's, that's an elder conversation there. But let me tell you what's going through my mind as we close out. You know, as I hear Kayla share Tiffany's journey in protecting herself as she, you know, rests in love and, and Kayla drafting a model of that for herself. I think about, again, this law around intent. And although not perfect, it is better than where we were before December 2022. But the fact that when I should be focused on intimacy and pleasure, that as somebody diagnosed with HIV, I also gotta be focused on the after effects of that intimacy and pleasure. And having to do a contract with someone is something that has never crossed my mind. And so I brought this up as a part of our closing. For those of us who show up as allies in this space, continue this dialogue, you know, starting with coworkers, families, friends, around what this law is, around what disclosure means. Tammy, thank you for uplifting that. Didn't realize that even the term disclosure can be traumatizing for some people. And, and I would include that, you know, as we continue on. But don't let it stop here. You all are gonna have the entire toolkit. You know, our Georgia sisters, use their video, use a Georgia fact sheet. But continue the conversation. If not, all of this would have been for this one hour that we spent together. And we don't want it to stop, we want it to continue. So again, Tammy and Kayla and Deidre, thank you. You know, don't tell Florida and Alabama, but this was absolutely the best of the three conversations. And you all who joined us also made it so rich. So enjoy your day, continue the work, and let's continue to fight to end new HIV diagnosis in Georgia. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Have a great day, Old Purpose. Thank you all.
Have a great day.